Should I start reading?
Yes.
Start reading.
Welcome, welcome, everyone. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who select policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunity for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequential adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 9th, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board policy 2230 recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central admin, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you. Matt, would you please take the role?
Yes. Beth Baron?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Jess Deutsch?
Yeah.
Betsy Baglio?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz? Daphna Kendall?
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is the adoption of minutes for the July 1st, 2020 meeting. Could I have a motion, Brian, second? Betsy, could we call a roll?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphna Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The next item is my comments, and I will just keep it very short. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to this meeting. This is our mid-month meeting. It's a special meeting where we're kind of covering whatever needs to get done. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be on the 28th, our regular monthly meeting. The Board is extremely focused right now on restarting the schools, and I know there's a lot of curiosity in the community about how that's going to look. And we are looking to our interim superintendent, Dr. Galasso, to guide us on this, and he is working methodically to put together a plan and will be consulting with various, with the Board and other parties, and bringing that to the public as soon as possible. But we are, as I said, laser-focused on this, and I want to thank those within our administration and our staff and our educators, and also the health officials from the municipality and others, the mayor, and others who have contributed and are helping us with this plan. And I really appreciate, we all appreciate, the work that's going into this, and you guys are working 24/7. So, thank you for your dedication to this, because we all want to see our children returning to school safe and as much as possible in person in the fall. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
I guess I have a housekeeping issue, Matt. We're getting notifications that the meeting's maxed out at 100 attendees. Do you know if there's anything we can do with that?
Yeah, I see that. We've never been close to this amount. I signed up for this Zoom, and I would ask that some of our employees that really don't need to be here, they can watch the meeting later. This isn't necessarily a spectator sport. I can try to go onto Zoom right now and see if I can upgrade the account. We haven't even come close to this before.
Yeah, so, public, we're working on it.
Thank you, Daphna. Okay, Dr. Galasso, would you like to take?
Sure. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to highlight two administrators this month, and actually a third person, Elizabeth Collier, who's been working with me in public relations. Tomorrow morning, the public will have the opportunity to see a short video and animation regarding school opening. When I took over on July 1, I met with the administrative staff, and I offered a mentorship program for employees and administrators who wanted to work with the senior-level administration in developing this reentry plan. Keisha Carrington is one of our supervisors, and she is the author of this animation and video. I think the parents will find it very informative. It's a great tool for showing how schools will look different in September than they look in the previous September. And these animations and videos will be sent out every two weeks, providing updates and instructional videos for our students. You know, one of the things about pre-K and first-grade students, this is their first real experience into the public schools, and unfortunately, it's going to look different than it has for other youngsters who've had that opportunity. So, we're trying to provide these little vignettes, so that parents can talk to their youngsters about face mask-wearing and social distancing and hand washing, and doing it in a way that hopefully prepares them for the reentry into school in these different conditions. So, I do want to commend Keisha, outstanding work, 20, 30 hours above and beyond of whatever we did. So, I don't know if Keisha's on tonight, but Keisha, take a bow. Wonderful work. The second is, I sent a preliminary reentry plan to the Board of Education this morning, and I want to thank Stephanie Greenberg, another person who stepped up. And Stephanie was one of the authors of the PowerPoint, along with Elizabeth Collier, and I want to commend Stephanie for her work. She was able to take all the different things that I've been sending and editing and different people have been doing over the last week and a half, and put it into what I think is a cohesive, coherent, logical presentation that the Board of Education can now review and give us input as we move forward. A couple of important things are going to occur over the next two weeks. We're going to be meeting with our reentry committee of about 35 faculty and staff on the 21st of July. And on the 23rd of July, we're going to be meeting with the PTOC and representatives of all the six schools, special education parents who are represented in all of our schools. And we're going to, on our website, there's going to be a link. It'll advertise the meeting. There'll be a link to where parents can read the plan and ask questions. Because we anticipate a lot of questions, we'll be able to categorize them and make the meeting more meaningful, because you will have had an opportunity, the people that are going to be participating will have an opportunity to have the plan two or three days in advance, be able to ask questions, and we'll be able to provide quality answers to make the meeting as meaningful as possible. As you all know, we only have until August 3 to have this plan solidified, approved by the county superintendent, submitted to the Department of Education, and disseminated to all of our parents, so that you can make arrangements with regard to childcare and other issues. With regard to childcare, we know that a hybrid model, which we're recommending, is going to inconvenience parents who work full-time. We're working with the YMCA and other community partners to offer as many opportunities for childcare and tutorial work as we possibly can. That is part of the plan, and I want to thank the community partners, who have been so wonderful in providing options for us. So, I want the public to understand that the bottom line is that the learning community of all of our kids and our staff are our top priority. And the plans will be fluid, because as the governor sends out guidance or retracts some of the freedoms that we're able to enjoy, our plan may have to change. I will say this, the Board of Education, at last meeting with the technology improvements, with the Common Learning Management System, if we do have to pivot to remote learning, it'll be significantly different than it was last year. Princeton has a quality teaching staff. It has a great administrative staff, and it is dedicated to one thing: kids first. So, with that, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Galasso. I think the next item is public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Mr. Bolden, do you want to let people in? We ask that you, the public, if you would state your name and your address, please, before you speak, and that you keep your comments to three minutes, to respect the fact that there looks like there's a lot of people in this meeting, and there may be many people who wish to speak. And then, when you would like to talk, I think you raise your hand. Matt, how do people let you know that they would like to speak? You're muted.
Yes, they raise their hand.
Okay. And to raise your hand, I think you can, it's in the bottom of your screen.
Julia Dippe?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, my name is Julia Dipple-Pompliano. I'm a parent of three children who have been educated in the Princeton Public School system. I'm also a full-time practicing physician, frontline emergency medicine, in one of the largest healthcare networks in New Jersey. So, I'm speaking tonight with the unique experience of seeing firsthand the horror of COVID-19, while understanding the stress our children are feeling. I'm not worried about sending my child back to school. Statistically, his mortality and long-term morbid risk will be exceedingly low. We know, however, that all schools are viral infectious disease Petri dishes. It is the effect on our teachers and the community spread that we're mainly concerned about. We must take whatever action we can to mitigate risk for our teachers, our community, and particularly for our elderly and immune compromised, that our teachers and students may come in contact with. Lindsay Marr, engineering professor at Virginia Tech and national expert on airborne transmission of virus, says, "You can think about it like this: indoor air equals put a drop of dye into a glass of water; outdoor air equals put a drop of dye into the ocean. Any class that we can take outdoors will mitigate risk. A large local university is providing incoming freshmen with portable fold-up lawn chairs for planned outdoor classes. Grassy areas can be tended for overhead protection. Every single class that can be should be moved outdoors. For those that cannot, we should be reconfiguring higher-risk rooms into negative-pressure rooms, so the air is not recirculated back into that room. This will require maintenance and HVAC experts, but most hospitals have easily and quickly converted hundreds of rooms to negative pressure in a few short weeks. This will be particularly important for the music and band rooms, which may have a higher risk for aerosolized virus. Another possibility would be to convert HVAC systems to 100% outside air. Princeton Public should start on this now to get ready for the opening of the school. We need to think about our tipping point. How many cases of COVID-19 in our school are we going to tolerate before we shut down and go back to all online learning? One, two, remember that even one case of COVID-19, when it pops up, it's where the disease has been, not where it's going. Current CDC guidelines state that if one infected person is in the building, the school must temporarily close for two to five days. Keep in mind, each teacher carries a unique set of risk factors of age and medical issues. Some are caregivers to high-risk family members. School reopening means that we are putting our teachers in the roles of frontline workers, just like doctors and nurses. Some of them may need a higher level of PPE. Without going into detail tonight, I can tell you that proper PPE works from personal experience. And proper PPE is not always just a cloth face mask. Extra protection, N95 space-shielded, upgraded HVAC, portable air purifiers are costly but necessary. Speaking from personal experience, it is much easier to go in and do your job well when you feel safe and fully protected. Administrators and community as a whole should not ask our children's teachers to step into a situation that they themselves would not want to step into. Make no mistake, we are still at war with this virus. This fall, our teachers will be soldiers on the front line. Let's do our very best to send them back into battle as safely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernadette A.
Yes, my name is Bernadette Alexander, and I'm a parent in the Princeton School District. I was made aware of a very racist video of white children using the N-word and homophobic language and dancing to a party over the weekend. And very sad, very upset and disappointed. I'm an African-American woman. I sent my children to the school, and unfortunately, this is what I had to watch yesterday. So, I was told that the Board does not have a, that there's no code of conduct for racist incidents that happen in Princeton. This is not the first time that African-American parents and families have to watch those kind of things happen, and the Board has not been proactive in doing anything about it, and the school has not taken a really good stance about that. I saw the little letter that Jessica Baxter wrote, which was very subpar, and that was the nicest thing I could say. It was terrible. It was pathetic. She really needs to come back with something better. We are demanding something to be done, because we're tired of our children witnessing racist reactions and comments in Princeton, and the Board and the school standing behind these children, and the parents threatening to sue everybody because they're rich. This is not supposed to happen in 2020. We're all here paying taxes and doing our best. There's no reason for us to be, our children to be exposed to this kind of behavior, and nothing gets done. We had another racist incident on the bus a few years ago, and that child got a slap on the wrist. Nothing gets done when it's black people. When you had the other races, the Chinese and the Jewish people, the Board and everybody else got involved, and all kinds of things happened for that. Why is it when these things happen and they use the N-word and those other derogatory words, nothing gets done? And the principal should be ashamed of herself. It's pathetic. It's embarrassing for Princeton, and this should not happen in an affluent community like this, when you, everybody here pretends they're woke, but you're not woke, because this is not right. Thank you.
Barry, you're muted.
Would you like me to comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. The law in New Jersey is very clear, that in order to discipline a student for out-of-district behavior, there has to be a nexus between the behavior and any disruption in school. In the absence of this nexus, the discipline cannot, the district cannot discipline students. Our solicitor's opinion is that this is a parental matter, and that's the only comment that we will be making tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Medina Arthur? I think you're muted.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
I can come back.
We can hear you.
We could. I think she muted.
Okay.
Ted Holston?
Okay.
I cannot hear you.
Okay. Do you want the previous, do you want the previous person to go, or do you want me to?
Yes. Thank you, Ted. Medina, are you ready?
I cannot hear you at all.
Okay.
All right. Can you hear me at all?
Yes. We can hear you.
Should we put a sign up to tell her we can hear her?
I don't think she can hear us is the problem.
No, I know, so she can.
Yes.
Can you come and help me for a minute?
Matt, maybe we can come back to her.
Or maybe she can read that? Oh, no, I guess you can't.
I texted her. Give it one second here. Hold on. Ted, you're up, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Ted Holston. I've been the ESL teacher at Littlebrook School since 2003. I love Littlebrook, and I love working with my students and their families. I've been looking at the Roadback document from the Department of Education, and it states that, quote, "Every decision to reopen a sector of New Jersey is determined by data demonstrating the decline in the spread of COVID-19." New Jersey's rate. Are we, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so Medina, that's, okay. New Jersey's rate has flattened, but it's not declining, and New Jersey has seen a rise in deaths from COVID-19 over the last two weeks. We've taken important steps to limit contact since March, and this has helped to slow the spread of COVID-19. Opening in-person school in the fall will undoubtedly lead to an increase in the transmission of COVID. I think we're pretending that we can divide people at high risk of getting seriously ill or dying from those with less risk. Talk to anyone in New Jersey, and you'll hear stories of friends and family in their 30s, 40s, and 50s who've died. This isn't the flu, and we don't really know how people are going to react when they get ill. Dr. Fauci has talked about the high incidence of asymptomatic people who are contagious. We will not be able to catch who is contagious and who is not in our schools. We're not like Major League Baseball, where they're testing staff every other day, or in other countries where they've done a better job of testing. So, even with temperature checks and monitoring for symptoms, we will have asymptomatic adults and students in our schools, and this will increase the spread of COVID. As one of the previous speakers mentioned, once we have positive cases in our community, we're going to have to shut down. We're going to have to have staff stay out. We're going to have to have students stay out while they monitor their symptoms. So, if we do reopen, how long can we reopen for? Governor Murphy, when he delayed the resumption of indoor dining, talked about how the virus spreads differently indoors and is even more deadly. We're now seeing emerging research that's showing that the disease is spread not just by droplets, but in aerosol form. That means even with masks, breathing the same air with an infected person will lead to the transmission of the virus. Even with social distancing, which will be impossible to maintain in a school setting, sharing the same classroom air for hours at a time will lead to the transmission of the disease. And I'd like to say, we all know stories of people like going to parties or meetings and contracting the disease. No matter how limited our school schedule is, it will mean hours of contact with each other. And we do know that children do transmit the disease. We've seen outbreaks in daycare facilities, and also children are the age group that's least likely to have been tested for COVID-19. There's a lot we don't know, so we have to move slowly. I absolutely recognize it's important that all families have the resources they need for their children to continue to learn online. I want to mention steps that you can take. If you're a staff member and you're concerned, reach out to leadership with these concerns. About half of the teachers at Littlebrook have said that they do not want to start in-person school in the fall, because it's not safe. All staff members must have real choices. Everyone? Yes?
I appreciate your remarks, and you're saying a lot of great things. We've got a ton of people who want to talk, and so we're restricting people to three minutes. So, if you could wrap it up real quickly?
Okay, I'll wrap it up. I will definitely wrap it up. I think that we have not met the conditions that will allow us to reopen schools. And my main question is this: instead of creating an upsurge in COVID-19 cases and deaths by reopening schools in the fall, which make no mistake, this will happen, why wouldn't we begin the year online, see how progress with treatments and vaccines is going, and know for certain that we have flattened the curve and turned it lower? Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ted.
Lee Sally?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Lee Sal. I am a kindergarten teacher at Littlebrook School. I know I just recently sent out an email message to, about, something's giving me feedback here, about play in kindergarten, and I wanted to elaborate on that with what everyone else has been saying about transmitting the disease and keeping CDC guidelines of being three or even six feet apart. I don't know how to teach five, six, four-year-olds being three feet apart. I just want everyone to try to keep that in mind. You know, picture, if you can, the first day of school, a little kindergartner is crying because they miss their mom or daddy. How do you help them from six feet away? How do you teach them to hold their pencil the right way from three feet away? Governor Murphy recommended no close reading circles. How do you teach reading from six feet away? You know, whenever I do writing workshop and we have conferences, I am sitting right there next to them. How do you conference with them from six feet away? I can't extrapolate any of those things into a vision where we're all very distant. So, mixed up with that is play. Play is essential to the children at this age. It's not a luxury. It's not an afterthought. It is something they absolutely need, and it's not something they can do by themselves. So, when we're picturing this socially-distanced classroom, to me, that's almost, that's not possible. So, I just, I'm hoping everyone can kind of keep that in mind when we're picturing what it will look like, and if it's worth coming back to that kind of a classroom, where we're all six feet apart from each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Katie Federico?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Katie Federico. I'm a teacher at Littlebrook, and I honestly wasn't planning on speaking, but I do have to just kind of address the way it opened, when we were told that watching this board meeting is not a spectator sport. As a teacher in this district, we are professionals, and we are really just interested to see what the layout is and what's going to be happening. We haven't heard much about what the plan was going to be, and so, unfortunately, we can't be in person, which would allow more people at the board meeting. But to just say that, we're not spectators, we're professionals, and we're just interested in what's happening. So, I just found that to be just an offensive way to begin the meeting, especially when you have teachers who have worked tirelessly since March to make the learning as wonderful as we possibly could for our students, and even continuing through the summer with ESY and tutoring through Zoom. So, I just wanted to say that piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers? I don't see any. Beth?
Thank you, Matt. If there's no further comments, then we'll move on to item H on the agenda, which starts with policies, discussion of policy 7550. I believe that's the question of the John Witherspoon name. Jess Deutsch, did you want to speak to that? You're on mute. You're still on mute.
I got it, sorry. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, just to, I wanted to give the public notice that we plan on July 23 at 8:00 a.m. in open session of the policy committee to discuss the renaming of JW Middle School, and invite the public to submit written comments to the Board in advance, or to join us and speak in person at that meeting, noting that the current Board policy doesn't permit naming of school buildings for people. And so, rather than a discussion of the policy, I just want to, the policy is listed as a reference point for our conversation, which we look forward to on the 23rd, and really welcome the public to the conversation with us.
Thank you. Debbie?
Yeah, I'm just really, really happy that we are going to have this public discussion. Yeah, I'm really glad we're going to have it with the public. I'm really glad it was on the agenda, so that we can bring it up, and I do look forward to, you know, what people have to say and the direction we're going, because not only people have to say and the direction we're going, because not only the university, but football teams are changing names, and you know, this is the right way to go. So I'm very happy that this is something we're doing. So, thank you, and I look forward to hearing what the public says.
Is this contemplated as a single public forum? I'm just curious, because many of the speakers and the professors at Princeton who've been very focused on the subject have made it a very high priority to, you know, say that all voices need to be heard, and that we, in this case, would benefit from understanding, you know, the origins of the name, the history. And we also obviously need to hear from everyone who is hurt or in any way upset by the name. And so I'm just wondering if we're going to just try to do this in one single session, or whether this might be a broader, you know, effort that could even...
Sorry, I'm having some interference. Is that just me, or is that...?
Yes, Jim.
No, we might just want to ask people who are on to make sure they're muted.
Yeah, we have a number of, I think, people who are not muted. Could you please mute? If you're on this call. We have a lot of people in our board forum because we didn't have room in the public attendees. We're hearing someone's phone conversation. Matt, I don't know if you can mute everyone? Somebody's... Ted Holston, I think you're still on live.
Yep.
And Lee made very good points.
Matt, are you able to mute him?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Jess, did you want to speak to Brian's question?
I think the purpose of that meeting is really to talk through all aspects of it, including the process, and to have a really open discussion that allows for input on the process. And, you know, I think that right now, we've talked a lot as a board about our focus on the reopening, and we want to keep our administration laser-focused as they've asked, and at the same time, we recognize the opportunity and urgency of the moment. And so I think that meeting is really meant to open the process of talking about what needs to happen.
Thank you.
Can I ask if, because I know that from the Equity Committee meeting, we get great attendance by having things in the evening, and while there are a lot of people who are at home who can do an eight o'clock meeting, there's a lot of people who also are working and eight o'clock in the morning doesn't work for them. So maybe if we could think about doing something, either two meetings, or, you know, one in the evening, one in the morning, whatever the case may be, just to make sure that all people who might be concerned, that might want to offer some input, are able to attend.
Sure. And Jess, will you be inviting the young man who started the petition, the graduate from Princeton High School?
I mean, the public is invited, so, and we're certainly, yeah, we can invite everybody who's interested, and if we have interested students, it would be great to have them participate.
Yeah, I just, sometimes the board meetings and how you get on is very opaque, so I wouldn't want someone who, you know, who's instrumental to the community discussion, you know, to miss out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion on that point? If not, I think we'll move on to the H1, the first reading, and we have policies. Does someone want to speak to those? I guess there's, these are just first reads, so we're putting them on the agenda. We haven't necessarily had all our comments or internal discussion of them yet. We're just introducing them for the process before they have a second read. Mike, do you want to speak to any of those?
Sure. There are three policies up for first reading, which in the past were pulled because I think they are imperfect policies. So that's why between first reading and second reading, we can look to adjust. But there are some important things in each of those policies that we need to get the ball rolling, and we don't want perfection to be the enemy of progress, and certainly not compliance as well. The policy that is entitled certification, however, in that policy entitled certification, it has clauses about the mandatory reporting of arrests and district reporting requirements that the district does have to have within policy. So even if we're not happy about the rest of that, we need to make sure that we have that part in there, and again, get the ball rolling. The second one, conduct and dress. It might sound funny to have a policy on dress, but the important part of that policy is that there is a part that speaks to unbecoming conduct of staff members, and that is also a policy that the board does need to have for a variety of reasons. The third policy, I don't think needs too much work, but it's about electronic communication by school staff, and we need to have one of those because we need to have guidance as well as procedures based off the policy for ways in which staff members can electronically communicate with students so that we protect the students from anybody who may be doing so appropriately. So those are the three policies that are on for first reading today. Again, as the board looks into these more carefully, you'll see the reasons that I mentioned as to why we need to move forward with these policies, and if there are other parts of the policies that we disagree with, we want to make sure that we don't eliminate the entire policy. We can work on revising that to make sure those important parts are there.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Mike, can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask, did you take into account the changes that have been brought about with remote learning in the electronic communication policy?
I haven't, I think the electronic communication policy as drafted was created well before. These are not policies that I drafted. These were the school board's board docs' policies. So no, I do not think it specifically addresses anything regarding remote learning. So that could be something we want to discuss between first reading and second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, you have something?
I have a question on conduct and dress. Does that policy, or somewhere else in the policy manual, address people who wear attire for religious reasons?
I do not believe we have any other policy on that, and I have a feeling that the reason why this may have been pulled in the past was for the dress part, which, Michelle, I think you bring up a good point, that that's probably the area that we want to focus on. So even if we somehow bifurcate this policy moving forward, my main part is to make sure I do have a statute, or, sorry, a policy that references statute about unbecoming conduct, and that we can really work on the dress part if not everything is equitable or has been addressed.
Okay, so if we have comments and the board wants to work on these before the second reading, I assume they can address the comments to the policy committee, and we'll maybe do an email tomorrow to the board about policy committee, and when we're meeting, and we may want to add a meeting if we're doing a hearing, we won't be able to do some work. So we can get back to the board on that, Brian?
I'd say what's been helpful in the past is when we've had an opportunity to see, you know, the marked-up version of the policy, to note any additions or deletions, and then have an opportunity to hear about the rationale for the suggested changes.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to mention on the last one, 411926, a couple meetings ago, David Rosengard? I'm sorry. He mentioned that there was an issue in reaching students.
That's right. I have that on my list.
Okay.
I got that as well, the one about being able to simultaneously send a note to a person and a district email.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would just also add that we've adopted Canvas as the learning management system, and one thing we were told is that messaging between students and teachers is much easier on this platform. So I think there was a note in there that communication with staff and students should take place on a platform as much as is possible, and I think we have a platform now, as far as I understand, that makes that easier.
Okay. So we'll send something out internally to kind of talk about how we can all give our comments into one place and the timing so that we can keep working, and hopefully save our administrators some time on that. Okay, so that's a consent item, the first reading. And then we go to I1. Again, I'm going to go through these, and most of them are consent items, so if you have a question, just raise your hand really visibly so I can see you, because I'm looking at two screens, one with my glasses and one without. So the first item is the I1 12-month employee return-to-work plan.
I do just have a question. I just, Barry, thank you for your answers to my questions this morning. I just want to be sure that we have the PPE now that these staff members need in order to return to work.
Yeah, we believe so. You know, we don't want to put anybody's health at risk, but we do need people at Valley Road in order to plan, whether it be fully remote, whether it be a hybrid. And we do have the PPE, and we do have a rotation schedule and social distancing that would allow people to come into the office and contribute in person.
Thank you.
Thank you. I2, appointments. I3, termination. I4, resignation. I5, six-period compensation. I6, student services. I7, curriculum and instruction. I8, leaves of absence. I9, substitute reappointments. I10, stipend. I11, personnel actions. I12, retirement payouts. I13, evaluation model. And then we come to J1, purchase of materials, curriculum associates, K5-ready class for mathematics, and I-ready instruction.
Sorry, Beth, I was just curious, how many years is this for? Because I know, Barry, you said the other one was for three years, the AMP.
Yeah.
Amplify Science.
I'd have to get back to Debbie. I don't know how many years this is for.
Okay, thanks.
J2, purchase of materials, Amplify Science. And K1, educational placement of special needs pupil. K2, revised INVO healthcare associates, physical therapy, and occupational therapy. K3, revised professional consulting services, assistive technology. K4, commission for the blind.
Sorry, I just had a question. Is K1, is that actually, it should be, is that back last year, 2019, 2020, or is that for the future, 2020, 21, for the placement?
Matt, can you answer that? Let's see, could you repeat the question, please?
My question is for K1. It looks like it's last year's placement, but I'm wondering if that's a mistake, and that should be 2020, 21.
It's a, yeah, so it says 2019 ESY Summer Aid.
Okay, so I...
So maybe it's a typo with the year?
Correct, so...
Yes, I did not see that. I'm guessing it is a typo because it's so far beyond last year's ESY.
Okay, so you'll check that, and...
We'll get back to...
That will be amended.
And I see, I actually, I'm just noticing this now for the next one as well. It's listed 2019, 20...
That is correct.
Okay.
They do utilize more services from INVO.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Betsy. And then L1, outsourced network managed services renewal. L2, rejection of bid electrical services time and materials. L3, electrical services time and materials renewal. L4, travel and related expenses.
Yeah, I have a question. One of the travel has estimated travel expenses for $1,000, and I'm just curious where we're sending somebody?
Matt? That's the...
I don't think they're sending someone anywhere. I think they put that in as a possibility, not knowing in August, it's possible they may go.
Listened us online, I think.
Yeah, it says it's virtual, so it makes no sense.
I promise you, I will not authorize a spaceship or time machine. I...
Thank you.
I'll check with curriculum in the morning.
Okay, it's the only one there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. So that brings us to M1, the consent vote. Can I have a motion? Jess, a second. Daphna? Can we call a roll?
Yes, we can. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Jan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Send agenda passes.
Thank you. That brings us to N1, public comment on any topic. This is our second public comment. Again, we ask that you say your name and your address, and you keep it to three minutes, and you can raise your hand in wherever you are on your screen.
So Medina Arthur? Medina? She wanted to talk. She chatted me. Medina, can you hear us?
She...
We can hear you, Medina. Yeah, she can hear, she can hear. Oh, we can't hear you, no.
We can't hear you.
You know, we're very happy to have written comments, though. If you'd like to write to us, we will read it. Apologies for the technology. It's making it hard for all of us.
I had another request.
David Rosenfeld?
Yes.
Matt, David Rosenfeld?
Okay.
Hi, it's David Rosenfeld. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
School psychologist at the high school, and I just wanted to say thank you. The policy change on the electronic communication addressed the concern that I'd brought up a couple months ago, and allows me the flexibility, as long as we're using the learning management system, to contact students using their personal email if need be in addition to their school email. So just wanted to say thank you, and I'm amazed at how quickly it was able to occur, because I know that the policy changes aren't easy. So thank you, thank you. And thank you, too, for approving the technology, because I don't know what we'd be doing were that not in place for next year. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. As I said, we keep our lists, and when we get to it, we want to get it in there for you, so...
So I've promoted many employees, teachers, administrators, to panelists, so if anyone wants to comment, as a panelist, you are welcome to do so. There was one person that wanted to talk, but I do not see her as an attendee. Jillian Bartis? I don't see anybody else.
Okay. If there's no further public comment, then that brings us to the end of our meeting.
Can I just say something?
Yes, Daphna.
Yes, so I just wanted to say, we received a draft reentry plan today from Dr. Colasso. Some of us have had a chance to review it, but I want all the teachers, especially on this phone call, to know that your health and safety is a priority for me, and I'm sure shared by everyone on this board. And, you know, we follow the news, and we value what you've done for our children since March, and we know you had to do it with very little notice. And as we reenter, you know, you will be on the front lines, but you're also heroes. And as much as there are concerns about bringing teachers back to school, there is clear evidence, and supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, that it's the right thing to do for kids. But as we move forward with our reopening plan, please know, your health and safety and the safety of our students and other staff is the most important thing to us, and that will be guiding us as we make our decisions.
Thank you, Daphna. All right, yes, Debbie?
I didn't know if we, as a board, have an opportunity to relook at our communication policy or communication procedure that we signed last December. And I'm just, you know, basically in terms of how we present ourselves, or how we share communication for the whole board with the rest of the world, so... I don't know if that's something we should take somewhere else, or, you know, I just want to make sure that when things are said, that they represent the whole board, if the whole board has agreed to it.
I'm not sure that's on the agenda tonight. If the board would like to put something like that on the agenda, we could have a motion and vote on it.
But... All right, so can I request to put something next, the next meeting? Is that how I do it?
Sure, we can talk offline and see what you'd like to add, and I don't, I'm not sure exactly what you're proposing. So I think we have to have a specific proposal, and then we can vote on whether we want to discuss it, and then we can move forward. So are you making a motion?
I, I'm not sure, I just want to make sure that when board members speak for the board, speak, if you're speaking for the whole board, or you're speaking for yourself, so that my views and opinions, you know, are included. And so, and I don't know, I don't know if I make a recommendation to talk about this next month, I don't know if I should write something to say, how can we put this on the agenda? I'm not really sure of the process, but I'm, you know, whatever the process is, I will follow.
Okay.
Okay. So write something to put on for next month for us.
Right, I guess make a suggestion, that would be helpful, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
There are a number of people, it looks like there are people who missed the opportunity for public comment, I don't know if you're seeing the chat.
I do see a particular chatter, we were trying to get with Medina Arthur, I can read your statement out loud. Medina Arthur would like to ask the BOE to implement a code of conduct for racial and biased conduct across the school district. And there is another, Kristin Greenberg would like to speak, so I will allow her to speak right now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I'm a teacher at Littlebrook School, a special teacher, I've been over about 15 years, and I actually had a few questions, I know that you were talking about a reopening plan, is that going to be shared with staff before it goes out to parents? And if so, do you have a timeframe when it would be shared?
Dr. Galasso?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yes, hi, I'm glad you brought that question up. It actually has been sent to your union leadership, and the union leadership of all the bargaining units, it's already been sent out to them, and we are going to hold a reentry meeting, which contains somewhere around 35 to 40 different staff members who've worked on subcommittees since March, and that will be, they will be sent the reentry plan this weekend, and we will meet with them on Monday, Monday afternoon.
Okay.
It will be disseminated, I'm sure, by, throughout, it will disseminate it to all staff, because it will be online, so everyone can look at the options that we have preliminarily developed for the reopening, in accordance with the governor's reopening guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So if there's any other comments, otherwise, I think we can have a motion to adjourn. Brian, second?
No, 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 I have a question and a comment.
Okay.
The comment is the obvious one, which is just to express gratitude to all of the teachers and staff and members of the public who've tuned in, I think we're at 150 or something like that, which is, by my count, triple the highest number we've had in our Zoom era. So Matt, I hope we can find the extra $5 a month to upgrade to the next Zoom level so we can get as many as 500 participants in, that's the comment. The question is, in following the chat, it seems that there are some people who are still interested in commenting, so I'm curious whether we want to just try one more time to see if there are public comments before we adjourn.
Absolutely.
Teresa Crossbanded, too.
Get off milk, Teresa.
Hi, pardon, I wasn't, pardon my appearance, I wasn't expecting to be seen, anyway. I just had a question, and I was wondering if the people who are on these committees, and I'm not sure, because I'm not on them, if the PRI members, if they're compensated for their time? So I wasn't sure if it's voluntary or if they're compensated, and I don't, I'm not questioning whether they are or not, I mean, I am, that's my question, but I'm not judging, I'm just curious.
I think, I'll be honest with you, I have to check on that, I think there was some compensation, but I do, I don't want to respond until I know for sure.
I have feeling there's a compensation.
Yes, they have been compensated since the end of school.
Okay, I thought so, but, so then my follow-up question to that is, are the people on the Equity Team Committee being compensated for their time? Because I know they're being requested to go to some maybe workshops or things, and I know it's Zoom, so I'm just advocating, I'm not on either committee, but I'm advocating that they actually be compensated too, because I find it ironic that, like, people on the Equity Team would have inequity, and they wouldn't be compensated, but another group would. So in case they're not, I'm just, I'm not on either committee, I'm just all about leading by example, and if we're going to be equitable, let's do it.
Yes, and we are being equitable, anybody who participates in any of the workshops this summer, it's part of our Flex PD component, where the first six hours are, give them credit towards not attending a PD later in June, and then beyond that, they're compensated at a rate that the board and the union had negotiated.
Oh, the Summer Institute, oh, that's fantastic, I wasn't aware of that, because I didn't see that published anywhere, thank you so much.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to?
Nancy Guggenheim is asked to speak.
Hi, good evening, my name is Nancy Guggenheim, I currently work at Community Park, teaching preschoolers with developmental delays, I've been in the district for 18 years, and a teacher for 39, so have a ton of experience at all different things, but this has really taken the cake. When you present the plan, I'm hoping that you can be very open and upfront with the teachers about your decision-making process, how are you deciding how many students are in a classroom, how are you deciding the schedules? When you talk about deep cleaning classrooms, what does that actually mean? In the past, we've asked for information about cleanliness, and we get very generic answers. I'm hoping that in this state that we're in right now, that the answers are specific and not generic, so that teachers can feel more comfortable, because right now, I am not comfortable with the idea of the reopening, even though I want to get back to the students and see them, but I know with teaching online, I feel like I have been successful in working with my students, even though they're only in pre-K. I think they are making gains, it is not the best situation, but I also think it's going to be really, really difficult to stay six feet apart from a crying preschooler.
Well, I'll answer your question, Nancy, thank you for the question and concern, I think you expressed the concern of everyone. My daughter's a special education teacher, my son's a special education teacher. I recognize the difficulty in going back to work and working with kids and putting yourself at risk. I can only tell you this, I've been doing this for almost five decades, like you, I am completely transparent, there's nothing to hide. If I tell you that there's a deep cleaning, it will be in accordance with CDC guidelines, I will personally look and make sure that the rooms are clean and the buildings are clean, because I wouldn't put you at risk if I wouldn't put myself there. That's the way I believe we should operate, but complete transparency, the plan is going to be transparent, you will all have an opportunity to weigh in, and then eventually, we're going to have to make the decision. You know, the governor's reentry plan calls for both a hybrid and an in, a live instructional methodology. Now, whether or not that's going to change as this COVID crisis continues, and there are the rapid rise in cases, I don't know, but I can only assure you of this, we will spare no expense. We have made arrangements today to have additional quality companies that we've used in the past here in Princeton to help clean and sanitize our buildings, and we're taking every precaution. There is a wonderful doctor who began the conversation tonight, talking about ventilation, I was on a call today with our team, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, we're trying to meet every guideline. And you know, it's difficult in Princeton, you have beautiful architecture, but buildings are 100 years old, so there are a lot of difficulties that go along with individual school districts who have beautiful architecture, but maybe not the most modern facilities. But I can only tell you that we will do it with the utmost care, your safety, the safety of kids, and the safety of our entire community, because no one wants to be ill. So I thank you for your comment, but be assured, it will be completely transparent, and you will have an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Seems to be, but.
Can we just reiterate for people to raise their hands if they want to speak?
Yeah, just put your hand up, and you can do that at the bottom of your screen, if you go where, into the chat function?
Kip wants to speak, Matt.
Great. There we go. Go ahead, Kip.
I don't think you all have adopted a budget yet for COVID retrofit and procedures, but I'm assuming you're working on one, is that going to be available pretty soon, or for review, as to how much all this is going to cost, and even procedures cost money, so I mean, if the kids are all sent out to wash their hands every 45 minutes, or whatever it might be, that, you know, that's something that we all would like to know about, and I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, I'm just saying, you know, but I assume it's going to be part of the process, but I'd also like to have some dollar amounts.
Go ahead, Beth.
Barry, if you'd like to address it, I just want to remind us that normally, we don't do Q and A in our comment section, and we are happy to take any comments in writing and respond to people and give information, just trying to note that generally, we don't respond.
Okay.
Can I just preview for Kip that that will be a topic on the facilities committee agenda coming up Monday, the 20th?
Which is open, isn't it, Brian?
Yes.
So it's open to the public, and the link would be on our district calendar under the meeting date?
Yeah, Kip attends many of our meetings.
Yep. Again, I think we all want to reiterate our gratitude that so many people have tuned in tonight, and we understand that this is a time where many, you know, there's so many questions, there's so many things moving, and that we're all in great uncertainty, so we appreciate your coming to our meetings and, you know, writing to us, letting us know what your concerns are, we read them, and we're all doing our best, but we appreciate, we appreciate your being here with us tonight. Is there anything?
Well, we have Ashanti Thompson on, who's talking, who has mentioned that a lot of people got on late, and she wants to make sure that we address some of the concerns in the chat, and I'm wondering if she might want to speak to that, because unless people raise their hand, it's hard for us to. We can't hear what your comments are.
I promoted.
Yeah, so.
Oh, good.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I was reading through some of the comments, as well as speaking to many parents and families of black children, and I don't know if we discussed the video that has circulated, I wasn't on, I was trying to get in earlier, but it was closed, so I don't know if there was a discussion about that, I don't know if it was on the board agenda, but if it was or wasn't, it's something that needs to be addressed. I think the response and the letter to the families, from what I'm understanding and what I read, was not okay. I think we have to start, really, we keep having all these sort of justice, equity meetings, and if we're going to move forward as a district, we really have to dig into what's happening here. We cannot keep saying things are a mistake, we have to make people be accountable and responsible, and that is the only way we're going to move forward. So I know there are plenty people on here that want to say something, so I appreciate you, Michelle, for reading my comment, I can't speak for all of them, I just know that it's a discussion that is going on in the town that is not a good discussion about Princeton High School.
Dr. Galasso, did you want to repeat what you said earlier, in case there were people who didn't, who weren't be able to get into the call when we did address this issue earlier? Dr. Galasso? I'm sorry.
I muted myself, I apologize.
I think there was a question about the video and our response, and I think you made a statement earlier that you might want to just repeat in case people missed it.
Our school solicitor wrote this email for the board. Purpose of this email is to follow up on our telephone conversation regarding the student video. The law in New Jersey is very clear that in order to discipline a student for out-of-district behavior, there needs to be a nexus between their behavior and a disruption in school. In the absence of this nexus, the district cannot discipline students. Therefore, this is a parental matter, and that is the comment of the board.
And I respect that, and I'm not saying, I'm not even looking for discipline, I'm looking for honest conversations, because while it happened outside of school, it is still our children that represent Princeton High School.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn? Dan? Second? Brian? All those in favor of adjourning? Raise your hand. Those opposed? I think, I think we have a majority. I think we're adjourned.
Yes.
Yes? Okay, thank you again, everyone, for attending.